Thank you for the regularly scheduled meeting of June 16th, 2014 for the Pledge of Legion. Mike Hurley.
(inaudible).
Counselor Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Hurley.
Here.
Counselor Cottin is not here tonight. Counselor Manusos may be late. Counselor Martino.
Here.
Counselor Rell.
Here.
Counselor Roberts.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry.
Here.
And Mayor Montaner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Floris. Our first order of business is the recognition of four employees who are retiring from the town this evening, which I have the opportunity to say a few words about each of them. And I'll say before, do make some comments, that many of them have been here as long as 34 years. To capture, in a few comments, that long service to our town is, you know, an arduous task. And I hope, in some ways, it's a gesture, not encompassing the full gratitude for such dedicated service of these four employees. I'm going to start with Phil Smithwick, who's here. Phil started with the town in 1986 and served as our loyal tree warden and arborist for many, many years. And I think Phil balanced, from everything I ever saw and people said about him, the needs of our residents, with some of the competing interests of folks that probably came into town, had different ideas about how tree trimming was going to occur. And, you know, he did that. And that uninterrupted service, and I know residents throughout the town have always come to appreciate, you know, his kind service and his attention to our residents and the treatment of the trees on their properties and the town properties as well, which is not always the easiest thing to do. I think many, many residents have referred to him as very understanding, very kind, and very sincere in his work over those years. So we're very fortunate. He actually also became a participant in the Tree USA program for about 16 years on behalf of Weathersfield. And I think everybody that's worked with him and our residents will all agree, we'll deeply miss him and we wish him good health and good well-being in the future. I have a little plaque for you if you can come up, Phil. Thank you. Paul was Director of Data Processing, joined our town in 1983. He was joking a little bit in his comments to us about his history here, that when he started here, he could imagine the technology was quite a bit different in '83 than it is as he's finishing up. He was talking about a database language called Admins, I think, back in the '80s, which was considered the fourth generation, hard to believe, a fourth generation of technology back in the '80s. It's probably on Generation 2000 by now. But with the departure of the previous IT Director, Catherine Cole, in 1995, he assumed the director job of data services. Anybody that ever worked with Paul probably thinks that he was born for the job. I mean, the man was thorough, conscientious, an amazing data management person, could recite just about anything, correct just about any problem. So he certainly was involved with the Year 2000 problem for our community, solved so many of the data management issues that came over the course of his 30-plus years. And obviously, led the way in terms of getting our system up on MUNIS, most of the technology, obviously participated with our renovations, particularly of the town hall. I think Paul's the kind of person to quietly not talk about his accomplishments, but those of us who've worked with him all these years certainly know what a talented individual he was and is. And we were fortunate and honored to have him on our staff. So we wish him well. I'm sorry Paul could not make it here this evening, so pass his goodwill on on behalf of the town, and we have his plaque when he attends. Now we've got Laurel Gudgen, who's retiring. And Laurel's been getting a lot of press lately, which I think she well deserves, I might add, between Weathersfield Life and the Current. All of our residents in town know her, I think, of the thousands of residents that passed through the doors at the library, have met her, I'm sure, at some point. You know, she's just had so many achievements since she joined us in 2002. You know, she certainly survived the library renovation. I don't think she had any gray hair when we started it, and we managed to get her gray over the course of two and a half years. But during that whole period of time, all of us that were here and participated in the renovation know what great lengths she went through, Laurel, to keep everything going. You know, you were creative, resourceful. I don't know how you moved all that product through in the places that you moved it and kept everybody going. It was just a phenomenal effort, I think. As a result of Laurel's director role, we've got a new teen area, a larger children's service area, we expanded meeting space to four study rooms, three conference rooms, 21 Internet computers for the public. She brought Wi-Fi into the library under her stewardship, implemented radio frequency. She declared a library landmark for its role in the Newberry Award. She's done so many things. She obtains tens of thousands of dollars of grants for our community, for our library. Those are some data, but those of us that have worked with Laurel know the person, too. And I've had the good fortune to have served in our community, sat on the library committee, watched her in action. We always kind of kid about the amount of information Laurel will put out about the library to us on a weekly basis. No stone unturned, no piece of data missed, the number of people that came in, the number of people that got books and returned them, and just a phenomenal capture of what our library is all about. And I think most people would agree, and I think if I recall correctly, one of the local libraries was closed for a while, and people came here and they remarked about what a joy it was to be in Weathersfield for the time. I think it was Newington, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm correct, Laurel. And during that time, a lot of people met her as our director of our library, and I think left clearly with the same impression we have, that we were very blessed to have her here for 12 years. So someone that really deserves her retirement, earned it well. Can't believe she's 70. I don't care what anybody says. When I heard she was 70, I almost fell off my chair, but God bless you, you look about 50. So hopefully that means you'll have 50 years of great retirement ahead, Laurel. We wish you very well. Thank you.
(applause)
And you were supportive in providing that storage.
Yeah. Glad you helped me out.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your great support of the library.
Thank you.
Do we want to wait and see if Lonny comes, and we'll do it if he comes a little bit later, take a break?
Yeah.
Because he is due to come here. So I'm going to wait on Lonny, because I think he is coming, and we'll just switch back if he is able to make it over. Because he's one of the guys we sure want to make sure we see if he's coming, so.
Paul, is it okay to say a couple of words?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Phil, I'm going to miss you, serving on the Shade Tree Commission as the council liaison. Not a real popular commission, and people didn't think that it did a lot, but we had some really great people who served on that and took their role very seriously. And you offered such good advice and mentored everyone on that commission. We'll miss you, but enjoy your free time. And Laurel, you have been just wonderful. You were such a good hostess when we had the Japanese delegation come to visit us in October, and they were so impressed with what you showed them and were really looking forward. They were looking at building a new library in Nagayo. So that was such a great opportunity for them to see what had happened here, and all the different technology and sources that you had. So thank you so much. Enjoy your time.
Yes, Mike.
Just one quick thing about Phil. As an attentive neighbor of the town green, I am always on the lookout of those little white signs that they tack up along trees. And one day I did see one on a prominent tree around the corner from my house, and it had Phil as the contact person, so I wrote a nice little note to him, asking about the status of the tree. And Phil was nice enough to meet me in my driveway a couple of days later, describe the situation with the tree and the reason why it needed to come down. And it's volunteers and people who are dedicated to the town that show great service, and so definitely you had that, and I appreciated that. Thank you. All the best to you.
Tony?
Just wanted to add a comment about Phil. I had the pleasure of working with him my first few years with the town. And not only did he take care of the trees, but then in the winter, like all the other employees at Physical Services, he got tagged with snow plowing as well. And one night I had the fortune of riding along with Phil and operating the side wind plow for him. So he's very detail-oriented and made sure the roads were, you know, well cleared on his route for our residents. So Phil, thank you very much. And Laurel, good luck to you, too.
Thank you. And if Lonny comes in, we'll take a stop. We're going to move on to public comments. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Gus?
Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Guess what? Morrison Avenue and stop sign. Equality and fairness in town. The town manager has stated that it is against the law to install a stop sign on Morrison Avenue. I would like to have an explanation of why it is against the law. But in the meantime, let me ask the following question. What does Hillcrest Avenue has that Morrison Avenue does not? Hillcrest Avenue has two stop signs at the intersection of Orchard. By state standards and as stated by the town manager, these stop signs are not needed. Morrison Avenue has one stop sign at the intersection with Orchard in the westbound direction and none in the eastbound direction. Morrison Avenue has no stop sign at the intersection with Tifton Road. By state standards, a stop sign is needed in the eastbound direction since the intersectional side distance, Mike, intersectional side distance, is only good for less than 24 miles per hour. And the roadway grade in the eastbound direction is 6%. The posted speed is 25, and most of the traffic goes at 31 miles per hour, which is not safe for the existing conditions. What does Walker Hill Road has that Morrison Avenue does not? You know that in the vicinity of Bliss Market, there is a stop sign in the southbound direction with an additional sign making the driver aware that incoming cars do not stop. Morrison Avenue has the same situation with the additional signs telling the drivers that upcoming cars do not stop, or that we don't have that. By the way, two other locations in town where stop signs are located in one direction and not in the other, all have signs making the motorist aware that incoming traffic and crossing traffic doesn't stop. Morrison Avenue does not. Now, the famous, let me refer to the police report dated May 21st, 2009. This is 2014, five years later, and I will not go away. The report stated the following, and they're talking about Morrison Avenue. Stop signs should not be used for speed control. I agree. I believe that stop signs on Hillcrest Avenue were installed to control the speed and to reduce traffic on the street. The manager has stated we don't need it, so why are they there? Another one says stop signs shouldn't be installed in a manner that minimize the number of vehicles having to stop. You know, Hillcrest Avenue, just the opposite has been done. If you go up and down sideways or whatnot, you have to stop at that intersection. But yet the police says that should not be installed, or should be installed to minimize the number of vehicles. Okay. Once the decision has been made to install two-way stop control, the decision regarding the appropriate street to stop should be based on engineering judgment. Yes, engineering judgment. In most cases, a street carrying the lowest volume of traffic should be stopped. Apparently, this was not done on Hillcrest Avenue. A stop sign should not be installed on the major street unless justified by a traffic engineering study. And let me ask, the major street here is Hillcrest Avenue and not Orchard. Was a traffic engineering study ever done at this location? I don't think so. The very reason, here is talking about me now, the very reason that the citizen states we need a stop sign there is the very reason stop signs should not be added there. They're talking about me regarding Morrison Avenue and Orchard, because they really believe that I'm saying install a stop sign because people are going fast. I'm saying install a stop sign because there is a need for Tifton. Before the reconstruction, this intersectional side distance was good enough. Right now, it's not. The road has moved south and has created a problem. And yes, I would like a public explanation of why the requested stop sign on Morrison Avenue is against the law, and it's okay to have stop sign on Hillcrest Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Anyone else wishing to speak from the public this evening?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. Mr. Colantonio has been up here many times talking about his stop sign. It's obvious you folks and the prior folks have no consideration for what his concerns are. His concerns are for a safe neighborhood, and I would think that that would be your objective as well, have safe neighborhoods. The way I see it, a sign is the most inexpensive protection you could put out there. I couldn't care less what your police say or what the other things say, but if it would work to make the neighborhood safe, I would say put a sign up. Give them a waiver. Give Morrison Avenue a waiver. Rules are rules, but they're made with waivers on them as well. And same with this. You asked the State of Connecticut for $10 million more, and you asked for a waiver, and you got it. Rocky Hill asked a waiver for $5 million. I suspect they've got it as well by now. So the rules that you have can be modified, modified with a waiver. Why don't you folks just vote and give a waiver on Morrison Avenue and put a sign out there? And see if you can keep the neighborhood a little more safer than what it currently is. I don't think it's going to break the bank with the 90-some million dollar budget we have here in town, and I don't think it's going to break any policeman who said that you can't put it up, or you shouldn't put it up, or any engineer that says don't put it up. It's not going to break them. Pull a waiver. Give it to them. Let's be done with it. I mean, everybody wants to live in a neighborhood that's safe. Obviously, his neighborhood, he feels, is not safe. I think it was good to see and hear, over time, that we've had a number of retirees. And as I said at the last meeting and the meetings before, I think it would be a great opportunity not to fill these positions. I think it would be a way of savings. Mr. Dudley, who I knew, because I had talked to him on numerous and more occasions about IS issues, he was a very smart guy. He knew what he was doing. He had everything at his fingertips to do what he had to do. Matter of fact, our employees have computers at their fingertips, and that, over time, we should have seen a reduction in our staff. Our accounting people should be more efficient, people that are sending messages back and forth instead of years ago, and you'd write up and type up a memo and send it to so-and-so via some kind of a big brown envelope. Today, it's done by email, and it's done within moments. We should be looking at reductions in our cost of running our business, because we have these tools. These tools have been out there now for a long time. I remember when the tools were new. To work with the programs that we had to work with, it was very difficult. It took programmers to do this and to do that, and today, analysts can do a great deal of that. And you have analysts upstairs that can do it, and you don't need all this professional help or replacement of a lot of this help. All the, you know, look at Dolores's area, where everything now is online, or at least a lot of those records are online. The traffic coming into her office is probably much less than what it used to be, because they can go online. I go online and look at her records all the time, but I don't come to the office. And, you know, this ends up sifting down to where our government should be getting smaller and smaller. So I would encourage you to consider some of these items. You know, the citizens have the same expenses as this town does. We see our MDC bill going sky-high. We see electric bills, we see gas bills, we see with buying the gas for our automobiles going up again. And yet you buy it on contract, the long-term contracts. We can't do that. But the fact is, everything that we're buying is going up. And the salaries aren't going up. The opportunities here are not, still not here. The sale of our homes are not going up, for those that do sell, and of course, a lot of them that do sell are selling less than what they should be, or to that, you know, they're up a little higher than that recession price, but we're still hurting. The only thing that's going up are those other, those expenses that I spoke about in our taxes. And we need to have a government that's going to reduce them. And I also hope you'll give Mr. Colantonio a stop sign. Give him a waiver, and let's move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports. Council reports. Tony?
Two reports. I went last week to the Weathersfield Stakeholders Meeting in Old Weathersfield. Want to say that the various groups down in Old Weathersfield are working together on events, trying to schedule things at the same time. The Weathersfield Historic Society, the Webb Stevens Group, Comstock and Faridho Group, they're trying to coordinate all their activities so that they occur one after the other, and maybe events can happen over two days like we had Memorial Day weekend, so that we can draw more people to town and help with economic development. And what they did was they gave us, they've got a schedule out, if anyone needs them, they'll be available. One, the Historic Society's put up with their summer program. The other groups are coming with theirs. And the new place card that's going into all the locations coming into the state is a new one, advising people of Old Weathersfield. So those are going out, too. So they've done a great job with that. So that group and the Tourism Commission should both be praised for the work they're doing there. EDIC also met since the last meeting. Subcommittee is, Finance on that committee is working right now on the facade loan program policy, trying to rewrite that and streamline it to make it more user-friendly and all, and make sure everything's covered in there. And then a couple of weeks ago, a few of us went down to Meriden for some EDIC training that CCM put on that was very beneficial.
Thank you, Tony. Other council reports?
Yes, the Youth Advisory Board had a meeting scheduled on June 5th, but didn't have a quorum. This is the second time in three months they haven't had a quorum. So I think they will be looking at membership on the committee, and I talked to Kathy Bagley the other day. It's a very large committee, it's 19 people. And I think they'll be doing some self-reflection as to how many people need to be on there, and try and get it as a more manageable, active group, because it's an important area in our community, and to keep not having, being able to get quorums, quora, is not good. So I think that's the focus for the fall, to try and reestablish themselves and get some active people appointed.
Thanks, Jerry. Mike?
I did get an email from Cindy Greenblatt, who is a member of the Historic District Commission, that she will not be seeking a reappointment to the commission. Cindy is a great volunteer. Many of you guys know her through town, through a number of organizations that she's on. It's sad that she won't be seeking a third term on the HDC. I wish her well, and we're looking forward to finding a replacement for her when her term does expire. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. The other council reports? Counselor comments?
I just wanted to recognize, a week from tomorrow, we have high school graduation, and I know, I happen to know a lot of the kids who are graduating, having coached them in soccer and baseball, and I just want to congratulate them, and particularly this class, has dealt with some of the inconveniences of the high school reconstruction, and I think they've handled it with class and dignity and respect, and I think they should be commended. And I'm just, you know, honored to know a lot of these kids. So I think, as a council, I'm proud to recognize them. And also, I believe Saturday, Counselor Manusos's U-16 soccer team won the state, Connecticut State Cup, so I did want to recognize that group of kids as well, and Counselor Manusos, who has done a good job coaching these kids as well for many years.
Thank you. Deputy?
Yes, I just want to recognize some of the town staff in the Physical Services Department. There's some areas around town where the grass never gets cut. It's up against fences, it's on Collier Road, there's some on High Crest, and the town crew has been out there this year, and not only cut the grass, but trimmed it, it looks really nice. And so I just want to thank the staff members that are responsible for that.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Tom Andrews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thursday evening, 5:30, there's a dedication for the Loretta's Dream Pavilion at the park, so put that on your calendar. Also, tomorrow, 2:00 PM, the governor's coming to town at 30 Jordan Lane to sign a bill, a ceremony of bill signing. The bill is an act providing immunity to a person who administers an opioid against to another person experiencing opioid-related drug overdose. So there's a bill signing tomorrow at 30 Jordan Lane. Also, tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, the council get a tour of the high school construction progress, and we'll meet at the main entrance.
Thank you. Jeff? Dolores, anything?
No, it's just that it's dog registration month statewide, and we have until June 30th to get them registered.
Thanks, Floris.
Thank you.
Move on to council action. I believe there are no resignations, but I think there are a group of appointments. Don?
Sure. To the Assessment Appeals Board, Mark St. Pierre, 182 Clearfield Road, from 7/114 to 6/30/20. I'm just going to read through all of them, we can. Building, the Board of Building Appeals, alternates for a three-year term, Stephen L. Andrea, 430 Main Street, from 7/114 to 6/30/17. Craig S. Penny, 47 Oxy Oak Drive, same timeframe. The Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, Les Cole, 69 Bolter Road, 7/114 to 6/30/16. Stuart Temple, 317 Brimfield Road, same timeframe. Citizens Energy Committee, John Poriello, 49 Dudley Road, 7/114 to 6/30/17. Design Review Advisory Committee, as an alternate, Richard Sitnick, 27 Deerledge Lane, from 7/114 to 1117. Robert Gary for the Fair Rent Commission, 10 Morrison Avenue, 7/114 to 6/30/16. Defense Viewers Committee, Peter Gardo, 60 Grizzle Road, 7/114 to 6/30/16. And Eric Littke from 33 Farmstead Road, 7/114 to 6/30/16. Human Rights and Relation Commission, Mark Gomez, 376 Old Peter Lane, 7/114 to 6/30/17. Barbara Rue, 79 Main Street, same timeframe, as an alternate for three-year, Marcus Townsend, 38 McMullen Avenue, same timeframe. Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission, Lawrence Buck, 360 Main Street, from 7/114 to 6/30/17. Insurance Committee, Robert Cobb, 99 Meadowview Road, from 7/114 to 6/30/19. Barbara Rue, 79 Main Street, same timeframe, as an alternate for three-year, Marcus Townsend, 38 McMullen Avenue, same timeframe. Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission, Lawrence Buck, 360 Main Street, from 7/114 to 6/3017. Insurance Committee, Robert Cobb, 99 Meadowview Road, from 7/114 to 6/3019. Library Board of Directors, Joseph Aguirre, 147 Clovercrest Road, from 7/114 to 6/3017. Personnel Appeals Board, George Cody from 131 Charter Road, from 7/114 to 6/3017. Dan Montano, 435 Old Reservoir Road, same timeframe. The Solomon Wells House Committee, Mary Maher, 36 Old Pepperidge Lane, 7/114 to 6/3017. The Tourism Commission, Charles Forstick, 18 Monticello Drive, 7/114 to 6/3017. An alternate, Carol Hall, from 51 Carriage Hill Drive, same timeframe. And last, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Michael Viera, from 116 Black Birch, 7/114 to 6/3017.
Second? Thank you, any comments? Nice, nice job, Donna. Want to take a breath?
Sure.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Thanks to all those folks for reappointing or adding. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move right into 3A. We have a motion on 3A on council agenda.
Motion to cancel the July 7th, 2014 and August 4th, 2014 council meetings? Second?
Thank you. Any comments, contributions?
Just have a question. We don't have enough business to hold those meetings and just.
Well, Jeff and I talked a little bit about the summer schedule in terms of meetings. And I think the agenda of the last couple of meetings has been getting a little lighter. And we looked at what the, the bit of words that are being done tonight kind of take us through a fair amount of time, particularly the July 7th one I favored us changing because it's coming on a four-day holiday weekend, which I think a lot of folks could probably take advantage of that extra time. So we did look at it in terms of the schedule. Obviously, we're careful about wanting to keep sort of the town's business moving forward. And Jeff and I chatted a little bit about it and we're both comfortable with it. So, and I talked to a couple of councils about it. So I don't think it's going to impair anything. And of course, we could always add it if there was a problem later in the summer, but I think we're going to be fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Donna.
Questions, concerns? We have a motion, a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to 3B, agreement between the Capital Region Council of Governments.
Motion to approve the participating agreement between the Capital Region Council of Government and the Town of Weathersfield and KT International concerning licensing and implementation of Heartbeat CAD, Connecticut Chief RMS, eCitation and eCrash. Second?
Thank you. Jeff, you can probably fill us in on this.
Yes, KROG has been working with the Chiefs Association on reconstruction of various computer systems. The CAD, Computer-Aided Dispatch, RMS, Records Management System, and the other smaller packages, eCitation and the eCrash. The development and purchase of this will be done through a grant through KROG. It'll be installed through a grant through KROG. We'll use the existing support cost we have with Visionaire to handle data conversion. So our upfront costs of $53,000 are covered by a grant. Our data conversion costs are covered by existing budgeted funds. And then next year, our all-in cost for all four systems is $13,420, which is less than 35, we're already in the Chiefs here if you want to fill in. We're just starting on the, the MOU. So we'll have it see a significant cost savings next year with the CAD RMS system and go from there. So the Chiefs here to answer any further questions.
Nice timing, Chief. Any questions for Chief Citran or Town Manager on this?
I think Chiefs worked with Newington quite a bit on this to, to make this happen. So it's a great project.
So this was really a factor of good timing?
Yes. We were having, we've had problems with Visionaire from the very beginning. But, and they've, I don't know how to put it politely, they've robbed us for years. So.
That's spoken politely.
What, what was happening is that we have a system called paperless. That's what drives the report writing in the car to the station. And they stopped paperless. They've, they don't support it anymore. There's no patches, there's no fixes. If it goes down, we lose it. And they're going to charge us a lot more money for the new product that they're putting out, which increases the maintenance fee considerably because it's based on, what you pay on maintenance is based on what you spent on the, on the overall product itself. So about a year and a half ago, or maybe even more, it looked like CT Chiefs, which is what, something that we've been waiting for, for 14 years, was starting to come around and it looked like we were about to get it, that we could get it. That's owned by CPCA and KROG manages it. So we don't have to pay for the product because the licenses are free to the police departments. And our maintenance fee, I think the manager said it to you, was, we were spending approximately $35,000 a year in maintenance fee for our present system. The new maintenance fee is going to be less than, it looks like around $15,000, maybe a little less than $15,000. So that's considerable savings over the next 20 years. So everything about this is really to our benefit. It's also the way of being able to communicate with the other departments. There are seven departments, seven plus Hartford and New Britain that are already on that system. But seven additional departments that are going with it now as the pilot departments. And then Jim Donnelly had estimated that probably by the end of next year, there'll be another 30 that will be in this. So this will be a way that we can actually communicate and share information through the CGIS, through CISS, the State of Connecticut, that will save a lot of time, effort and, and money.
True. Thank you, Chief, for your work on that. That's great, great timing. Questions about that?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor. The town attorney had a tweak in this and we sent that back to KROG. So any approval, just subject to the final town attorney sign-off would be fine.
That's great. Motion, a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Chief. Moving on to 3C, authorization for a grant for the web tennis courts.
Motion to authorize town staff to apply for a United States Tennis Association grant for the reconstruction of the tennis courts at the web school. Second?
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Kathy Bagley's here this evening to talk about this. But as you know, we put the reconstruction of the web tennis courts in our current year CIP. We've also been working with the Tennis Association towards grants. They've reviewed our plans and approved the design of the courts as something that meets their, their standards. The bids came back, but they're recommending reinforced concrete rather than the asphalt surface. And that raised the price a little bit. But they're also encouraging us to submit for a grant. So I'll let Kathy get into that a little bit.
Cap, have a word with her.
Good, thanks. Yes, we've been working with the USTA Association over the past year. Their process for applying for a grant is you go through a preliminary process first where you submit all your information to them, starting with photos of the court's site design. The engineering department put together preliminary plans, sent that over to them. And then we've gone through that process. And then they'll tell you whether or not you're okay to apply for a grant. We got that word just at the beginning of June, so it was good timing because the bids had just been opened. So we're going to be ready to go if you approve it tonight to go ahead and apply for a grant from them. Their grants are for, the category we're in is for construction or reconstruction. And they'll give you 20%, up to 20% of the construction cost with a max of $50,000. So we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of being eligible for about $20,000. And we'll be figuring those numbers out as we work with them.
Thank you, Kathy. And that grant would get us obviously within the budgeted CIP number if we were to receive it obviously after the fact, it sounds like.
Yes.
Thank you. Questions about that? Pretty straightforward. Thank you, Kathy, for your work. And I know there was a resident town that was involved as well, right? That has been.
That had given us information on it, yes.
Yeah, I know she was helpful. Thank you, Kathy, for your work. We have a motion, a second in front of us. Those in favor of supporting the grant application?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you. Thanks, Cap.
Thank you.
We are moving on to 4A, bids.
Motion to accept a bid from McKenzie Service Corp. for fireproofing in an amount of $491,500, based on bid of $479,000 and alternate number six of $12,500. Second?
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the last bid package for the high school that will be put out on the street. The furniture, fixtures and equipment will be bid separately by the architect in the school, but this is the last CM bid package. Mike Turner's here this evening to talk about this. But as we spoke last meeting, when we rejected those bids, we wanted to make sure we had product that, at least today, we know of no hazardous material. I'm sure 50 years from now, they'll find something. But at least today, we know that it's a safe product without anything in it. It is a little over budget, but it is a product that we're comfortable with and we recommend approval. So if you have any questions for.
Questions for Mike Turner?
I did.
Mike?
Alternate number 15 and 16? I was a little confused on those.
What we did was we had asked the contractor to give us alternate pricing for a board type of fireproofing. It's almost like sheet rock, if you will, rather than a spray-on type. ONG staff had, had used it down in their old Lyme High School project. And it was cost-effective, although that was a new, a new construction building. So in this case here, we just wanted to get the prices to see if it, you know, how it would compare. And it's more favorable for us to just use the spray-on material.
What's safer?
Pardon?
Is either safer?
No, it's the same, it achieves the same two-hour rating. What happens is it's more coordination on the installers because what they have to do is, for instance, if you're spraying on a, on a roof deck, you have to spray after the roofer is done pounding and, you know, driving nails and things like that through it. So it's a little bit more coordination where the board would just go up, you know, ahead of time. But there's some, you know, because of the joist systems and all the pipe penetrations, it just didn't, it just didn't pan out and to be cost-effective.
How much cheaper is it?
It was more expensive using.
I mean, how much cheaper is the, the spray?
Well, the, the spray is the base bid.
Okay.
So these, these alternates would have been add-ons to that work.
Jeff, we're capturing the overs for the contingency or where are we getting it?
Through the owner's contingency.
So it's, it's about, it obviously $91,000 over?
Correct. But we had, we were under on the elevator. Right? Right?
And this rebid after, you know, since we rejected the, the previous two bids, this rebid did save us $60,000.
I was going to ask that. So it was originally only one bidder?
It was worth the effort to.
Okay. So it's about $60,000 lower.
Lower than what it was, yes. And, and we got competitive bids because this time we at least had a couple of bidders.
Has that done anything to our time at all in terms of?
No, they, they need this work, you know, to, to start probably in July, but.
Very good.
We should be on schedule with this.
Thanks, Mike. Questions, other clubs? Thank you. We have a bid and a motion in front of us for it. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Mike. Bid on mulch sealing.
Motion to approve the use of Mulch Seal LLC for crack sealing based upon 2013 unit prices in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Second?
Thank you. Jeff?
Again, I'll let Town Engineer Mike Turner go over this, but this is our annual street, part of the street maintenance program where we mulch seal several streets to keep them, is provide as much life as possible.
That, that's correct. The, the crack sealing process is one of the most cost-effective means that we have to, you know, seal the water from penetrating the, the roads. There are two methodologies out there. The mulch sealing, which is a cold-applied process. And there's the hot crack sealing, which is the hot tar that they melt in. KROG puts together these bids for the towns. Mulch Seal LLC is the low bidder on the, on the cold-applied version. So in actuality, he's actually holding his, his price. This is, it's a two-year bid. He's actually holding his price. So he's given us a proposal to do that. We've obviously done, done this work, you know, maybe over the last 10 years or so. It is a messy process. It's the one that, you know, you all get phone calls for a day or two concerning the dust and things like that, that, that's risen. But it's a very effective product and it's, it's really worked out well for us in terms of heavier-traveled arterial and collector-type roads. So.
Questions for Mike on this? Mike, do they post the roads in advance anywhere?
We send notices out to, out to the residents on those roads. We do put the notice in the newspaper as well. I think it's also published in the manager's weekly report and stuff. So we, we try and give as much notice as we can.
And I know that, that's done through CIP, so we know where they are already, right? In terms of how much we're going to be doing?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Mike, I'm sorry.
No, you asked the question. I just wanted to know if you would be notifying residents that live on the streets that would be cold-sealed?
Yes, we do.
Great. Thank you.
And is it only the high-volume roads?
It's only the high-volume road because it depends on the traffic volume to actually pound this stuff into the cracks itself.
That's why the residents love us.
So we need the traffic.
It is organic, but it does have stone dust in it and.
Correct. Yeah, the seal, the sealer itself is an organic material. And it's covered with a sandstone mix with, with, it does contain a certain percentage of organic material as well. So it's all 100% natural. It's just, you know, you got to find that, that right mix of, you know, humidity and precipitation and what have you to try and keep the dust to a minimum and still be effective.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. We have a motion, a second in front of us. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And finally, foresee the High Crest Elementary School parking lot?
Motion to accept the proposal from General Paving for paving improvements to High Crest Elementary School in an amount not to exceed $317,000. Second?
So Mike, you can walk us through this as well?
Certainly, as part, as part of the, the budget adoption process, council set aside money to look at repaving the, the lot out at High Crest School. As we did with the web school last year, we asked General Paving to give us a proposal to do, to do the work under their pave prep bid. And this essentially would be a change order to that, to that bid. And what this will allow us to do is because we have such a narrow window of time to try and achieve it while school is out, we don't have time to do the survey, to design, put it out to bid formally and stuff. We're using actual competitive prices in, in this regard, you know, by, by soliciting the quotes from General. So the prices, you know, right, right on with where we had estimated essentially. So the addition, he broke the work up into various components. And he actually provided a cost to actually repave the play, the paved playing surfaces. There are three, like play circles in the back of the facility as well. And that's, that's why it's, you know.
So the play area and the area in the back was not in the original.
That was not in our, our, our original estimate when council asked about paving. But, you know, Mr. Tabshy said that, you know, if we didn't, you know, it's certainly easier while he's there and has all the material and equipment there to take care of it. We would never get it done as an individual project for that additional cost. So it's staff's recommendation to, you know.
Get it done.
Get it, get it done. Right.
Makes sense. Jeff, do you want to talk about where, I know you, it's in here, but just chat about the funding.
Yeah, we, there's 300 in the budget. And as you know, we've got the $2 million crack fund, which every year we use to generate interest, which is, which is put into the CIP. This year generated more than the $90,000 worth of interest that we anticipated. Roughly $15,000 more to this point. So we're recommending sweeping that into this project. And then we'll scrape up the other $2,000 from somewhere else in, in the physical services or engineering budgets to pay the other $2,000. But that's what we're recommending, put that money to use and keep it going. The $2 million principal won't be touched as, as we anticipated.
Questions, concerns?
I just have concern over taking it from the, the crack dollars. You know, we really had talked. You know, we really had talked about that money, money being not used. It was going to, you know, defer the cost of taxes for that property over the course of the next 20 years, I believe, Jeff. And so I just, you know, I understand the need. I understand sweeping the, you know, interest, but, you know, a little here, a little there, pretty soon you get into the principal, not meaning to, and then it's gone.
Right. And the, and the, and how, and how we anticipated using this to make up for the taxes was to invest it and generate through those investments the same amount of money the crack building was paying in taxes, which is about $90,000. So we anticipated sweeping $90,000 out of the interest earned already. All we're doing is taking an additional $15,000 that was earned above the 90. So it's the same principle. We're just taking all the interest rather than just $90,000 in the interest, and still leaving the $2 million principal untouched.
Understand. It's just an example of, you know, I just think that a little here, a little there...
Sure.
I think it's a good point, too, and I have the same concern, Donna. I think ultimately, when we look at this, and this is on a sidebar, but we look at this source of funding, eventually, I hope we will be able to look at some of the principal for redevelopment projects that will allow us to capture some of the tax that we're hopefully replenishing at some point off the previously occupied building that no longer is on the tax roll. So I think eventually we'll get to that, but I think, given this, it's probably our best strategy to keep our budget, at least it's helping keep some of our operating and CIP budget under, under a wrap, so support in that sense. But good, good point, of course. Other thoughts, concerns, Mike?
Did you say we're thinking about taking some of that money?
No.
For redevelopment projects? I thought we were leaving that money. It had to be like a supermajority vote to even touch that money, the $2 million?
The principal, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the principal. My comment was, eventually, I hope that we will have a redevelopment project in front of us for consideration with the council that would allow us to take some of that money to go toward redevelopment of something that will then bring back some taxes that we currently aren't. That, I think that's the ultimate goal in, in the minds of some of us that support it, you know, looking at that. We haven't got anything for digestion right now, but I think ultimately, I would hope that we have a project that gets presented where some of these funds that are sitting out there would have the opportunity to be stimulant. But that's just a, you know, philosophical comment more than an actual one before us tonight, of course, but we'll have dialogue about it, I'm sure, at some point if something surfaces. But I would think, when you look at the $2 million principal that's sitting there, to simply have it sit there at what, less than 2%, right?
Less than 4.
It's between 3 and 4%. You know, that's certainly not going to get anywhere near replenishing what we lost on that building in terms of tax revenue, so eventually, I would hope that these funds could be used for that, that will do a stimulant. But again, we don't have that in front of us tonight, but...
Anyway, back to this point, we have a motion, a second with respect to the parking lot. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Thank you. We have no ordinances or resolutions, just approval of minutes for the special meeting of June 2. Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any changes, additions, deletions? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? And then the regular meeting of June 2?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any changes, additions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Finally, just public comment. Anyone wishing to speak at the end of the meeting this evening?
It's me again. Good evening, again. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Just a point of information that basically, I think, three or four weeks ago, we had a rainstorm. And on a grass area between Tifton and Silas Dean, there's a good portion where the water has eroded portion of the soil there, so it needs to be fixed. I don't know if it's the property owner's job to do it or the town, but it's between the curbing and sidewalk. Also, you know, just before you get to Silas Dean, you know, there is, there is a pothole being developed there, you know, and, and it's sad because, you know, when I look at it, I already see the sand, or should I say the dirt at the cracks right there. You know, it seems like, you know, there is about half-inch to an inch of bitumenous, and it's failing fast. But one point I'd like to make it, that basically, the erosion on that road, the past couple of years, has happened twice. I've been, I've been there, I lived on Morrison Avenue since February 1971, and before the reconstruction, never had a problem. Since reconstruction, which is about two or three years, we had twice. Is there a problem there that every time we have a heavy storm, we're going to have this kind of problems? Just, you know, just a point of information for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Other comments from the public?
Good evening, again. Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. This evening, they've talked about road paving, and over the year, years, I've talked about road paving as well regarding that seam that goes down the street, and how 90% of the street looks good with that seam, but then you find 5% or 10% where it opens up, which is poor workmanship. 90% of the road is done good, which means the workmanship was good, but then 5% or 10%, you know, that piece that opens up is the portion of poor quality. Poor, poor quality on the part of whoever the people are that's putting it in, and poor quality on the part of our employees who are supposed to be making sure it's done correctly. Now, I've seen, as I'm riding around town, different streets now are getting paved. I, I hope what I've said before will, will be implemented, where we'll be watching and be assuring, maybe holding back some money for the course, as, as an observance to if these roads open up. Because this is our, this is one of our biggest problems, is the roads opening up, and then next thing you know, they're out there putting this tar, or whatever in the world it is, into those cracks and putting some other stuff on top of it. I mean, that costs the town money. It's not costing the guy who did the work money. It should cost the guy who did the work money. Because if you, if you did that and held his feet to the fire, he'd do a better job right from get-go than doing the sloppy jobs that they're doing. And we're going to pick up, we're going to pick up the cost. And I know, over the course of the year, it's only 50 or whatever, 1,000, and it's a small portion of the entire budget, but it's, it's an aggravation, it's a cost, and these people should be held accountable. So I, I would hope that you would send a message to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members from the public? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn?